Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Bader City Council. It is 6:04 PM on Wednesday, December 6, 2023. Roll call. Here.
Hannah Charlton.
She has not gotten ahold of us, so she will be unexcused.
Ethan Daly.
He did get ahold of us, and he has to be excused.
Brandon Hall.
Yeah.
Mike Carson.
Eric.
Michael Ferguson.
President.
All right, we have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The Parks Board held their Holiday Bazaar fundraiser and tree lighting event last weekend. It was well-attended, and so I imagine that is going to be a continued tradition here in the city. Hopefully, everyone's gotten a chance to go down and check out the jail and the decorations that were put up. And so let the season begin. Lewis County Department of Emergency Management, there's an optional upcoming training for elected officials next week on the 13th in the evening. You can sign up online. There's a flyer in front of you with that information, so take a look at that, and hopefully you're available. And then just a general reminder for councilmember training, reminder to take any online trainings as elected officials. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? No? Agenda approval. Lisa, did we have any changes we needed to make?
Item number three.
Okay. It's item number three, but there is a resolution instead of just a discussion, so not really a major change. Other than that, I don't have any other modifications.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes to the November 22, 2023 meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the minutes from November 22. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second of all, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of December, 2023, the amount of $38,889.29.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two special reports tonight. I'm gonna let Erica Cat with the Lewis County Department of Emergency Management go first, as she has some other business to attend to after this meeting. Erica?
Hello. My name's Erica Cat. I'm with Lewis County Emergency Management, and we have been working on a hazard mitigation plan for a little over a year. One of the benefits of the hazard mitigation plan is, one, it outlines the natural hazards in Lewis County. I highlight natural because it does not include man-made disasters or terrorism-type events that could occur here in Lewis County, but very, it's very much focused on all the potentials for natural hazards in Lewis County. So Vader is a participant in this plan, the city of Vader is, and I've been working with Joe on trying to get you all included into the plan and moving forward in it with hazard mitigation items and actions and different things that could benefit the city of Vader. So one of the process in this plan is, early on, we created a set of goals and objectives, and we moved forward in doing some public outreach with advising individuals and the community about the different hazards in the area, asking questions or answering any questions folks may have. It's part of the planning process for that, is getting the whole community included into this planning process. And Vader, early on, there, that was that meeting, those meetings were, they were not, I don't think they were missed, but they weren't, there was no attendance by Vader, so because of that, we are doing it now, and we can count this city council meeting as an attendance for that piece of the planning, because it is a mandatory piece. So we're gonna, that's part of it, and we'll have that box checked off. And so we're here today. Please ask questions as I go through this. Also, one way you can, all this stuff that I'm sharing right now can be found at our Emergency Management webpage. So if you go to Lewis County Emergency Management, make sure it's Lewis County, Washington, not Lewis County, Idaho. There is a difference, and I believe there's also Lewis County, Iowa, so there's, make sure it's Washington. And on the left-hand side of the screen, if you scroll up, there's a section called Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you click on that, you can go to the very top of that screen there, there'll be a Hazard Mitigation Plan links, and you can click on Hazard Mitigation Story Map and Survey. Don't worry about the survey. The survey has already been conducted, and really, that was reaching out to the communities to see where they felt there needed to be some improvements made. We, there were significant number of individuals that participated in the survey throughout the community. And we've made note, a lot of it was based around community development, some, there are some informational type of information that the community wanted more, they wanted more from us at Emergency Management. There were some other items that were included and were, they were indicated in this plan, in the action items as an overall, this is what we need to do better, and we're gonna work on those items. So there's some tasks that were added to this plan that came out of the survey that we went through all together early on in this process. So what I'm gonna go over today briefly is some of the hazards that were found in Lewis County, and I'm gonna relate them back to the city of Vader. I know in talking with Joe about some of these hazards, they, they're, it's natural hazards, and talking about the different disasters that could happen around you aren't always give you the warm and fuzzy. So make sure, if you have any questions, just ask, tell me to stop talking and just ask me questions, and I'm here to answer as best as I can. So some of the natural hazards that were indicated are pretty, they make sense. So you have earthquakes, the Cascadia earthquakes that have that potential of happening in, at any moment. That is a large issue here in Lewis County. It's not from, like, that we're gonna have significant shaking, but it also includes the amount of people that could come to Lewis County from the west. So that is something that we have considered. We have also looked at the different types of earthquakes that can happen. We have anywhere from the Cascadia earthquake to the Missquali earthquakes, earthquakes from Mount St. Helens, and the probability of earthquakes or significant earthquakes within the next 100 years. So my fingers are crossed that I will not be around for the Cascadia earthquakes, but I guess that's why we have mitigation plans to help prepare for that. So our website gives information about that. There's a great site, like, goes back to our website. You can go to, it's called the Hazard Mapper, and there you can look at what, what types of earthquakes, with the different earthquakes, the Cascadia earthquake, the Missquali earthquake, earthquakes from Mount St. Helens. If any of those earthquakes you're interested in, what kind of seismic activity we may have, if it's severe or not as severe, what are we looking at? You can look that up on the Hazard Mapper, and you can type in your address, and you can look specifically at your home or anywhere you wanna look. Maybe it's your place of work, or maybe it's a family member's home. So, or somewhere you frequent. You wanna look, take a look at what that looks like. And that Hazard Mapper highlights any of the natural hazards that we have looked at throughout this process. It shows the possibilities of, and what that severity threat is to whatever address that you put in specifically for that area. So it actually is really interesting to look at the earthquake map, because there's some, there's some pockets that really show not as significant of a, like, a shape. And a lot of that is based off of the fact that there's different plates, and they move different ways, and they do different things, and that's taken into consideration. Us here at Emergency Management, we do, we are not the brilliant thinkers that think of this and how this all comes out. It was all, there was a consultant working for us that did all this, and they have all the brains and the machines and the tools and all those things that come up with misinformation. So definitely take a look at that Hazard Mapper if you have a chance. The next one, obviously, is flooding. That is a huge site in Lewis County. Part of the reason why I have to go shortly for another meeting is because of flooding. So we, we obviously know that that's a huge thing here in Lewis County, and it's obviously taken into consideration. Moving on down, flooded is a huge section, so make sure you take a look at that. Landslides is another consideration, and another hazard that is happening here in Lewis County. We have a few right now in Lewis County that happened over the last 24 hours, so definitely something to consider. And again, I'll go back and talk about what is specific to Vader here in a minute. We have severe weather. Now, severe weather isn't just about the rain. It's not just about the wind. It's not just about, it's about all of those things. It's heat waves, hailstorms, thunderstorm potential, which we're having more of. Think about in August when we had all those fires that popped up in eastern Lewis County. We have 40, it turned out to be 43 substantial fires in one fell swoop from a thunderstorm. We have windstorms. We have snowstorms and ice storms. Last year, we had an ice storm that came through. We had quarter-inch and ice everywhere. So those things are all things that we consider and are a hazard to Lewis County. Obviously, we have some volcano, volcanoes around us. Luckily, we don't have a volcano in our county, but we have volcanoes that affect them. So we have Mount Rainier and Mount Adams and Mount Hood that all play a factor, and that includes ashfall. So when considering this, besides the fact that Lahar may become a problem, there's also flooding, potential for a Lahar to cause dam failure. There's also a potential for ashload on buildings. So when considering a hazard mitigation, there's something to mitigate against a volcano, you may say, hey Vader, why would we need to worry about this? Minus the fact that there could be some flooding potentials from the rivers, but it could be because of ashfall. There is potential for that, and ash can get heavy, and it can cause, if the buildings aren't prepared for that ashload, then that is something that we can mitigate now instead of waiting for later. We have wildfires, so that is, this is somewhat new and something that we are actually pushing a little bit heavier in our hazard mitigation plan. Lewis County has had two type one, which, if you go to the senior officials class, which I'm teaching, so you'll get me two weeks in a row, and I promise it'll be fun. We, we have a type one incident management team here in Lewis County two years in a row, which is really uncommon for the west side, but will not be uncommon moving forward. We suspect that we'll probably continue to have these larger fires that include a complex incident management team, which means incident type one incident management, they're a large group of people dealing with large, complex incidents. And we need to, we need to have those folks come in. We have people as far east as Minnesota coming in last year. So it's just that we need that assistance to help and those resources to help put these fires out. So Goat Rocks was obviously a big one, and then we have the Calhoun Complex. So what we're doing with the Hazard Mitigation Plan is that we're highlighting the wildfire section. We are stalling a little bit on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Our hope was that it would be done by the end of this year, but we're gonna extend it about a month and a half, and we're going to beef up our wildfire section. And so it will include, we're working with DNR at this, at this point, and it will potentially, if we write it correctly, we will be opening up more doors to help for mitigation for wildfires. So that would include things like Firewise program, where we have funding to be able to help communities become, have defensible space, meaning they have space around their buildings or structures, their homes. In case a wildfire were to come, they have that space, that buffer zone, so that the fire does not affect their home. So this is an area that is somewhat new to our area for a large, large, those large fires that we, that the east side usually gets. So we're seeing this more, and our hope is that when we beef up this wildfire, it will become more of a highlighted hazard to Lewis County and to the west, into western Washington. We would be the first county in western, in western Washington to add this as a higher threat, but we have the legroom and the ability to do that because we've had large fires. And we've had, in two years in a row, evacuations due to these fires. So we do have that wiggle room to be able to beef this up a little bit more. And then we move into dam failure. Dam failure is actually number one on Vader's list. I do know that. The inundation zones, I know Joe has a map. You're interested in looking at it. I'm sure he's, I'm putting words in his mouth, and I'm sure he'd be willing to let you check it out.
Too scary.
It's interesting to see that Vader is highly infected, affected, not infected, affected, by dam failure. So when we looked at, when Joe and I sat together and we looked at dam failure, we really looked at what could we do or what could Vader do to mitigate a dam failure. It is really actually kind of hard when it's your whole city that could be affected.
Erica, just for one moment, for folks that aren't aware, if you look at this map, roughly three-quarters of the city is underwater. If one of the east county dams ruptured in its entirety, pretty much everything at the priest, at the, at the school property and lower is underwater. So just a...
Wow.
You do have time. So it's not like a big rush you see on the movies, and there's this giant big rush walking and it just wipes you out all of a sudden. You would have several, I think it's like an hour on a sunny day, nice weather. I think, Joe, if you have it in front of you, it's the sunny day one, the yellow one.
It was an hour and a half until, in the winter, when the rivers were running high, and a little over two hours in the summer when the rivers were running low. The notice that we had before the first water got here.
Right. Yes. So you have time. And also, the numbers that he is saying, those hour numbers, the hour, hour and a half or two hours, those hours mean that there is catastrophic failure in the dam, and there is no walls holding it up. Like, those walls just went whoops and went away. So just know that the likelihood of it happening, there's has got to be something large. Maybe a Cascadia earthquake, maybe not. There hasn't, there also with these numbers and that inundation map, it does not count for them lowering the dam. They have lowered it some. And it also does not count for any improvement that has been made since that, that inundation map has been studied, which I think was in 2019. So I do know that in talking with Tacoma Power, they have discussed doing a new map. And so once those are out, we'll be sure that you guys get your section of the map. So at least you can see the new, the new mapping for that. So let's hope, all things, fingers crossed, that all will be well with that, and it'll be much improved. But dam failure is one hazard, and it is the top of Vader's list.
About railroad derailing.
What was that? I couldn't, I didn't hear that.
The railroad, if it derails.
So that is considered a man-made, man-made disaster, not a natural hazard. I will tell you that we are actually actively working with Burlington Northern and Amtrak, and we also have, I know Amtrak loses line, but Burlington Northern, I think Burlington Northern is a rail that comes through Vader, if I remember right.
Yes.
And if they, yeah, so we're working with, because we have several in Lewis County rail line, but we're working with them to determine, like, what do, what do they have for resources? I went to a class with Amtrak for an Amtrak derailment, like, six months ago, I believe, and just talked about what does that look like, because when you have people involved, that's a whole different ballgame. And I've actually dealt with that. I was, I was one of the responders for the Amtrak derailment up in Pierce County. But for hazardous materials, that is something that we are working towards, with Burlington Northern, fire districts, law enforcement, and all those, to determine what does that look like, how does that response look. So, but it is not highlighted in the Hazard Mitigation Plan again, because it's man-made. So back to natural hazards, avalanche is another one that is highlighted with having a pass in our area, white pass, Highway 12, Street Route 410 and 123, they're all affected. So that is a area and routes that are considered, considered. The other thing that is considered is the amount of people that go over that pass. If they get stuck because of an avalanche, or if there's an issue due to an avalanche, we have to take into consideration what that looks like for those areas. How do we get around? How do we get fire out there or law enforcement if they can't get around an avalanche type of situation? So not that it affects you guys at all, but on the east side of the county, it does significantly. So that's why avalanche isn't here. And that is it. So we have eight different hazards in Lewis County that we consider. Earthquake, flood, landslides, severe weather, volcano, wildfire, dam, failure, and avalanche. And when we go back and look at the Hazard Mitigation Plan, we look at those different pieces. Too many tabs open on my screen. We look at those different pieces and determine, okay, what is, how can we mitigate these issues so that it doesn't affect us as much? Obviously, you're gonna have some affected areas, but say you have a building that is, has a high chance of flooding. How do we work on that, or what could we do to improve that? Warning system. If you needed a warning system due to, you wanna know more about a dam failure, there's a dam failure happening, and you wanna put in a warning system so that the town knows and has a good heads up, this is an action that we could put as a, to help notify the public of the dam failure, and we're gonna put those mitigation actions into place. And then there's potential for funding to put, to make that happen. There's different funding sources and different things that you guys, participating in that plan opens up the door to look at those things. So looking for the hazards. So the number one hazard, like I said, was dam failure. Next was earthquake, and then wildfire. Those are the top three, top three hazard risks that were ranked. Again, things were ranked by the consultant that did their study with all of their smart tools that they have. And there is some rule for, some cities have chosen to change things, but Joe and I have talked, and those were, they seem reasonable to keep them that way. There are other ones where severe weather and flooding. Those are, and again, this is, does not consider county areas, but strictly city. So that may change the way you look at them a little bit more. Because there's some areas that may be within the county that seem, oh, well, this area floods, and we need to consider that. But that's, we put that into our county plan, took those areas into consideration. I do wanna highlight that when we look at these action, different action items, we are not super specific, so we're not saying, on this street, at this corner, we're gonna do this thing. It's, if this happens, we would like to do this. And so it's, it's very broad, so it gives you more openness or wiggle room to be able to make changes to your plan and what you want to do for an action. And then lastly is avalanche, landslide, and volcano. Those are all low risks for Vader. And just, does anybody have any questions at this point? I mean, we're pretty close to being done here. No questions?
Erica, when is the, the updated map from, did you say it was Puget Sound Power? Is that who's putting that, or Tacoma Power is putting that out for the, with the newer, really reduced dam levels, lake levels?
I do not know that answer. I know when I talked to them this summer, I went out, I go out there every year and do a dam tour and just check in with them and make sure we're all on the same page and do all that fun stuff. And I do talk to them. I just talked to one of their... Uh, and I do talk to them. I just talked to their, one of their emergency managers earlier this week. But, um, and there was, when I was out there this summer, they said, um, that they are looking at getting funding to do that. Because it takes obviously a lot of resources to do that. Um, but they do have it on their radar and they're wanting to get it done as soon as possible. I would say within the next year, um, would be reasonable to say that they would get that done. Um, but again, it takes some time and I don't know where their funding sources are coming from for that. So, uh, I could get more information for you on that, um, but give me a little bit of time to try to get a hold of the right person. And they may not have that answer quite yet. Um, so that's my answer to that.
All right, thank you.
Will there be an online option for this training?
What, uh, for the senior officials?
Yeah, or is it strictly in person?
It's in person because there's, um, group activity, um, stuff happening. And we know, um, there are some cities coming with like all their council. Um, and so we're going to put them all together, um, so that you guys can think about your processes and your, and the way you're going to, if there's a disaster. On top of the training, so it's four hours and there'll be food, so, um, if you want to come for the food, at least come for that. I don't know what we're having yet, but.
Question from earlier.
Yeah, I was being shy. I didn't want to ask her again. I asked Joe if there was going to be food. Thanks for clarifying that.
There will be food. I don't know what yet, though. I haven't, we haven't figured that out yet.
All right.
Might just be pizza, but it might be more either. This, uh, the sweater put a damper on things for planning for that. Um, so, yeah, the next steps for this hazard mitigation plan is, um, I have to do a little bit more work. I was hoping to actually get this back to Joe last week, but, um, again, this weather has not been cooperating. So I'll get this to, Joe, I'll get this back to you by the end of the week, um, I promise. Uh, and he's going to, he just has to fill in a couple of things. Um, in fact, I may just send it to you now. Uh, and then, um, we get that back, uh, all the cities, all the municipalities, all the different jurisdictions that, that are working on this. To include special focus districts, um, all those that are doing that, they're due back, um, no later, preferably by the 21st. Um, what I'm encouraging folks is to turn it in the sooner the better. Uh, because if there's any needed changes after the 21st, you can't make changes. Um, the reason for this is because it goes back out for public comment and then CPO review. Once that happens, it'll take about two weeks. Um, and then we will send it off to, we'll do some fine touches, send it off to the state for the review. Review will, a state will review, send it back to us, we can make, again, some changes. None of the, the changes that I'm mentioning should not be much at all. Um, and then it'll go to FEMA for final approval. Once it comes back from FEMA for final approval, it will then go to each council. So you'll, you probably will see me again, um, in a few months. And we'll get final approval from, uh, council after you review it. And then once you adopt this plan, um, it will then, um, open up more doors for you for funding. It also can be tied into your comprehensive plan. Um, and once it, uh, this is a large chunk of what you, what is required for cities to do. And, um, so you can use, once it's adopted, you can use that, um, as supporting doctrine. So, um, this is a huge benefit to have this, um, plan completed and adopted. And we'll be coming back out and doing, doing, um, getting this adopted, um, in the next few months. So, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions?
Any other questions?
And I hope to see you all for the senior officials class. It'll be fun, I promise.
And there's food.
And there's food.
All right. Thank you so much, Erica.
Thank you. I'm going to jump off here, but, um, Joe has the information. Feel free to shoot me, you know, call me, whatever. Um, and then, um, yeah, hopefully it'll dry out soon.
All right. Thank you. As Erica was saying, that the hazard mitigation plan is going on our comprehensive plan that, um, it's going to be starting to be worked on pretty soon. So, all kind of, all goes hand in hand. Uh, all right, now next question, County Sheriff's Office.
I'll be shorter, don't worry.
I might have to let you go first today, knowing what was going to come on.
Uh, the Lewis, sorry, the law enforcement totals for the month of November, there's actually a slow month. There's only a total of seven calls per service during the month of November. A seven, 173, uh, citizen contacts while we're patrolling. Um, of the seven calls, we're going on shifts, resulting in addition to 12 traffic stops, resulting in one corrections.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was all over the place.
Yeah, that's, uh, any questions for Mr. Fraz?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on, city business item number one, 2024 budget estimates for the general fund. So there are a, a couple of minor, um, adjustments from the numbers that you would have seen, um, two weeks ago. Um, um, one of the, one of the large, the largest and most, um, exciting, I guess you should say, uh, revenue changes. Um, well, turns into revenue, more revenue, but, uh, on the expenditure side anyway. Uh, the Lewis County Sheriff's Department contract is, um, about $12,000 less than what we were originally, um, estimating. And of course, council has not approved that. That's actually later on in the, uh, in the, uh, in the, in the city business, but assuming that, uh, that you do adopt that or accept that contract. That certainly improved our, um, our budget by, by $12,000. Um, there were some other minor changes to, um, the amount of building permits we were expecting. We, we lowered that a little bit, so the revenue was a little less on that. Um, on the expenditure side, um, some other minor adjustments, um, as we got closer to the end of, end of the year. Um, Kristen noticed that, um, a few things like postage exceeded, um, what we were originally estimating by a couple hundred dollars. So that's been adjusted. Um, what else was adjusted? Postage. Kristen, what else, what else did we adjust?
Cost of the porta potty cleanouts for mid working park.
Park, park bathroom cleanouts, because we have the porta potties pumped, yep. We didn't have quite enough in there for that. We, um, on the park side of things, we moved, um, some of the, um,
Is that what it's under?
The park improvement, um, money. Um, we put some of that into the parks, cultural and community events line item. Uh, the park fund itself didn't change any, um, just, just where we were organizing money, just so we could keep better track of the park donations. Again, um, no other major changes, just, just some kind of housekeeping related things. Any other discussions, questions or comments from council? Anyone want me to talk about it more? No. It says, it hasn't, hasn't really changed, so. And of course, throughout the year, if any major changes needed to be made, I know at the last meeting, um, park board member Ken Jocelyn, um, talked to council about bathrooms. Um, a bathroom upgrade and things like that. We could still do that later with a budget amendment if we, if we chose to do that. Okay? All right, well, and, uh, if there's another discussion about that, um, we can move on to the next item of city business, which is ordinance. Um, for the 2024 Vader final budget. The discussion. Moving into the, into the ordinance itself.
Motion, any motion?
Please.
So I'll motion through the ordinance for the 2024 Vader final budget.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the ordinance for the 2024 final Vader budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, all of those in favor of the ordinance for the 2024 Vader final budget, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three. Uh, resolution for the agreement of purchase and sale of water assets buying between the city of Vader and Lewis County. Um, so, um, I had some face-to-face meetings with the county manager and public works leads. Um, we hashed out, um, a couple of different options, um, that they felt, um, the county commissioners might approve as far as an extension. Um, ultimately, when the county commissioners were consulted, um, they were only in support of a two-year, um, extension to our, um, to the agreement. Um, in this two-year agreement, um, Vader would be responsible for paying back, um, expenses county had to improve the water system, um, that they expended from their general fund. Um, it's come to light that county has at some time been, that sometimes been subsidizing, um, water system repairs from the county general fund and not just utilizing Vader water system ratepayers funding. And so in the future, throughout this extension anyway, um, if they were to use county general funds for improvement, during the time of the extension, they would be, they would be, uh, tallied up at the end and we would be responsible for paying those back. Um, 50% one year after we take ownership of the sys- system and then the remaining 50% at the end of two years after taking back the water system. And if Vader did not take the water system back whatsoever, uh, we would not be responsible for any payments to county.
They don't, they don't want to give it up.
Um,
They just, not easily.
Well, what I'm hearing is that they're using money that the water system doesn't have. So they're pulling from other books, which is kind of the reason we lost it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um, I think that's, I don't know, this anchors more to this, to the story of why Vader lost the, lost the water system. Um, county certainly has deeper pockets, uh, to pull from, um, when the system does need to get subsidized. Uh, versus Vader would, would have. Um, as far as, um, the thought that county doesn't want to give away the water system, I think it's less that they don't want to give it away. And, and more, it's easier for them to keep it at this point because it is integrated into their daily operations. They have, um, employees that are shared between multiple water systems that, uh, that county manages. And so it, it becomes a hassle to unmarry our portion of the overall water activities that they have, um, from, you know, to divide.
Which, which is frustrating, which is frustrating because they knew that this was coming the whole time. They, as soon as they got it, they knew that Vader was going to be trying to get it back. And we've been talking about it for the whole time, so.
Perhaps, but I am, I am happy that they, I mean, at this point, they're not, they're, they're, they are entertaining the extension. Um, and, um, and I certainly recommend that we take the extension, um, as written. This, uh, agreement expires at the end of next week. And then without this extension agreement, the original agreement expires at the end of next week. And without this extension, we have nothing. At least if we have this, um, we'll have a couple of years to work out a variety of other, um, options.
In the meantime, that's two years.
We need to get the system back, not work out other options.
Well, hold on, Bob, what's that, Randy?
That's two years. Reimbursing for anything?
No. The city, the city reimburses county for nothing. Unless we, and, you know, and the earliest payment would be
A year.
A year after.
Okay.
Taking, yeah. And, and, um, you know, this is a two-year extension, so two years from, um, December 16th, so December 16th, 20, 2026. And so, and that's just when we'd have to request the system back. Obviously there, the transfer process would take longer than that, um, you know, before we actually get the keys to the water system, I guess, as you could call it. Um, you know, it could be, it could be long, longer than that, too. But, but I, I, I would say that we don't have a lot of options at this point and, um, this is certainly a better option. Um, one of the, one of the concerns, um, that, that we had was the county is going to be doing a major upgrade to the water lines. Um, Vader still has, Vader, like many, many cities in the country, still has some asbestos cement, um, water lines, water mains. And, uh, the county was about to start a process to restart replacing those. And, um, we certainly didn't want to interrupt that process. I mean, I mean, that's something that needs to be, needs to happen, uh, for the good of the city and the residents.
They should have done it a long time ago.
It, it's inexpensive, it's, it's expensive. Um, you know, they're going to utilize, um, some of their COVID relief money that they had. The county had $15 million, so they're going to, um, apply some of that to it, um, to help, to help out that upgrade. So, um, it's, it's entirely likely that at the end of the two-year, that during this period, they, they will do that project. And if they do that project, um, part of the reimbursement to county would be, um, those costs. Um, but whether the city did those upgrades when we got the city, well, the city replaced the lines in three or four years when we got the system back. Or whether county does it now, either way, it needs to happen. Someone's going to have to pay for it. So certainly better that, um, it gets done sooner than later.
Don't we have? Don't we have the city planners going forward with the proposal for receivership?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they have started on that. They, they're about, um,
A hundred thousand dollar grant, right? To pay for it?
No, no, there is, the, the document that needs to get completed to get the water system back is the water system action plan. That is not grant funded in any way. Uh, the estimate is about $30,000. Um, the city will have to pay for that ourselves. Um, they are about, they're about $5,000 into that $30,000, um, work. Um, I asked them to pause while we finalize this extension agreement. And so, um, we can ask for them to continue that work at any time.
Well, our water systems, the big infrastructure cost of our, our city's work, we lose that, that's, that's bad.
Right, which is why, um, this, this extension agreement's been vital to get, uh, to get, um, passed through both council and the commissioners.
Do we need a motion?
We would need a motion for the resolution on the extension.
Do we need a, are we going to say it more?
No, it's resolution, I don't have a number for it. Just the resolution for.
So I'll, I'll motion that, uh, when we approve this first amendment to the agreement of purchase and sale of water assets.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the resolution for an extension to the agreement of purchase and sale of the water assets. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Last on the city business, resolution for the 2024 contract for law enforcement services to Lewis County Sheriff's Office. As I had a little bit of a spoiler during the budget estimate discussion, county did reduce their estimated increase from 25% down to 12%, which takes the annual total from around 92,000 a year up to 103,000 a year, which is a modest increase. A reminder that it does include a decrease in the minimum amount of active patrol time that they guarantee us each week. Obviously, they could do more if time allows, but there is a minimum of 12 hours a week.
What's the resolution number on that?
We don't have one yet, just say.
I motion that we approve the resolution for the 2024 contract with law enforcement through Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution for the 2024 contract for law enforcement services to Lewis County Sheriff's Office. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson, further discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you, Joe, for, for fighting to get that price down. I know that was you doing a lot of talking with Snaza. So we appreciate that.
Well, credit to Mr. Snaza and, and the whole department for working with us to get that, get that lowered. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution for the contract services to Lewis County Sheriff's Office, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. And that is the end of city business. Public comment, members of the public have any comments? Online or in person?
I have a comment, but it's not, we haven't even do anything tonight, so.
They don't want to talk to me at the meeting? Okay. Anyone else?
I got a comment on the city not going forward, getting the water back. It's been two years, we didn't act on it. And now the taxpayers are going to pay. Thank you.
Good. Right, I'm hearing another public comment. Any elected officials have any comments? This meeting is adjourned at 6:57 PM.